Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'd like to call a meeting to order. Community High School Board Meeting of October twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Stand as they pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Real call please.
Mr. Gouk, Mr. Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Henning, Mr. Madrell.
Here.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Mr. Rokerson, Mrs. Towers.
Here.
Mr. Cramper.
Here.
Any agenda changes?
No.
We all had time to read the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? Oh, excuse me, public comment first, anybody have any public comments?
Mr. President, I have a comment or two here. Good evening, my name is Bill Wilson. I would respectfully ask the Board to consider following corrections to the minutes dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Page one, second paragraph, lines three and four should reflect fourth members present, not five. Page two, last paragraph, fourth line should read FY zero eight to FY seventeen, not FY eighteen to FY seventeen. Page two, last paragraph, additional line should reflect that Bill Wilson asked how much the cumulative property taxes were increased during the same time period discussed. As a note, the answer to my question is actually four million nine hundred ninety-three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, not five hundred thousand, as noted in the budget hearing packet. And in closing, I would like to ask that the Board of Education send a note or a card to the Waterloo School District and Board of Education expressing our school's sympathy with regards to the tragic death of one of their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Move forward. You have a consent agenda? We all had time to look at it. You have any questions? I need a motion to approve. Certainly. Motion to approve by Mr. Parrish. Second by Mr. Madrell. Real call then. Real call that started with Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen special board meeting? Unit of six. Community reports? Student number one. Principal report.
Okay, I got a couple of things. Okay, faculty introductions tonight. We've got Mrs. Karen Miller, and she's in our science department, and Mr. Mark Miller, and he's in our math department here tonight. So, thanks for coming. Okay, academic stuff. Biology, two classes, took a field trip to Missouri Botanical Gardens. Mr. Farner escorted them. Mala UN students have completed their resolutions. They're preparing to present at the Fall Conference next month, which will be at McHenry. The social studies students have been learning about the election process. They've definitely had a lot to look at. They've been processing and looking at the election coverage, analyzing presidential debates in class. The first quarter ended last Friday, October the fourteenth. There's a change, parent-teacher conference schedules. Something went out in teacheries, it's been in the paper, there's an all-call, but conferences are actually going to be next Monday from four to seven, and next Wednesday from four to seven P.M. We're going to alternate with the grade school. Clubs and activities, got a lot going on, too. The marching band and color guard competed at McHenry and Collinsville this month. At McHenry, the band earned second-place honors, and the color guard were awarded best color guard at the competition in their group. At Collinsville, the band and color guard took third place. That was definitely a more challenging competition because they grouped the classes differently, and our band was in with some larger bands, so they did a nice job. The math team has off to a great start, led by Mr. Miller back there. Alex Barowski took first-place honors out of twenty-four students at the SWIC math competition, and he's done this for the second time in a row. Cole Cassing placed second, Ben Nahas placed third, Brett Harris placed fourth, Alex Higgy placed sixth, and then Alex Barowski, Victoria Walden, Cole Cassing, and Nick Borja placed first in the team competition at SWIC. So, sounds like we pretty much own that one, that was good. Sad and Save Red Ribbon Week is this week, and that's planned by the Sad and Save students and sponsors, Mrs. Courtney Travis and Ms. Tina Haye. So, Monday was Don't Let Drugs Ruin Your Dreams, the kids were wearing pajamas and slippers to school. We also had the Do the Right Thing kickoff, so they're using a positive phrase this year called "do the right thing" because it's the right thing to do. We've been promoting it with the students, and Sad and Save bought students and faculty and members of the Board and teachers these bracelets that they've been wearing to try to, you know, to focus on good decision-making. Tuesday, they had Ready to Be Drug-Free. Everybody was wearing red. They had a guest speaker named Tim Collins, and he came in and presented to all four of the classes. It was called "To Be Honest." Wednesday was Socket to Drugs, so they all wore crazy socks. Today was Team Up Against Drugs, so they wore their favorite jersey for Jersey Thursday. And tomorrow will be Drug-Free in the Burke, so it's blue and white Freeburg attire tomorrow. Sad and Save has also been creating Google Docs about various positive choices, anti-drug use, anti-bullying themes, that they have been distributing electronically to the student body each day of this week. Community service stuff, the National Honor Society, led again by Mr. Miller, volunteered at the Fall Festival at St. John's at Smithon. Boys' basketball, led by Mr. Matt Lawer, and boys' football, led by Mr. Ronnie Stewart, picked up trash and empty trash cans falling to Chili Cook Off on October eighth. The art club, led by Mrs. Stewart, worked at Broadridge Pumpkin Fest, they painted faces for the kids there. And then FCCLA has been really, really busy. That's the Family Career and Community Leaders of America, and they have been volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House, serving chili to the homeless, and less fortunate, the Bell Christian Center for their thirtieth anniversary. The FCCLA this year has had about a hundred members volunteering from the student body for different events. They're putting in ten to twenty hours per week, and they're doing all kinds of really great things in our community and other communities. Students of the News, Senior Hannah Boss earned a game ball recognition for her volleyball play by the Bell News Democrat. Senior Brett Harris was recommended and selected for National Youth Leadership Forum in Medicine. Southmore Adam Haas completed the marquee. If you haven't seen it, it's all lit up tonight, looks great, and a landscaping project in the front of the school, first Eagle Scout. Andrew Rokerson couldn't be here tonight, he's prepping for four tests tomorrow. He was not here Monday and Tuesday because he had been selected to participate in this National Council on Youth Leadership at Wash U. So, he was there, leading students, going through these different service-oriented sessions, was actually working with a former Freeburg student, Jeff Cronenberg, who graduated years ago, who was in the program. And then they had a leadership banquet that night, so he's playing a little catch-up tonight on all his college tests tomorrow. And then this is really cool, too. Senior Maddie McDuffie, she's selling holiday gift bags, and she's selling them for twelve dollars each, but then she's asking for people to donate the bags back. They're filling, she's filling them with candy, and then she's going to be delivering them to children in the hospital who can't leave for trick-or-treating and other holiday events. So, she's doing that all on her own, and just a really great heart, so a lot of good stuff from our kids. Faculty's been going through some professional development. We had a Path Day, October sixth. Dr. Kelly Stewart from McHenry University came in and did a free presentation for us on the book, The Energy of Us, by John Gorney. It was awesome, it was great. It's all about bringing positivity to your school, to your life, to your job, to your work, and it's a lot of just really great points of, you know, thinking about the great things that you have and working to, you know, to bring everybody together to make the best atmosphere possible. They also had the St. Clair County Institute on Friday, so they did a session on SDHS Finance. They also did some sessions on Google Classroom, teacheries. They did Breakout EDU, which is using problem-based learning games to create interest in a subject or a lesson. So, the students solve puzzles or use clues to open boxes, and then inside the boxes are things that relate to the lesson, whether it's a book or whether it's, you know, a science experiment. So, pretty exciting stuff. Mrs. Harris brought that to us. Also, they did creating self-grading assessments with and without using Flubaroo, kind of a funny word, but pretty much what that means, it's a Google program that helps teachers quickly grade and analyze online assessments and assignments. That way, they can email the scores, the kids can get the scores back right away, get some feedback just instantaneously. So, that's something that they've been working on. We also had a law refresher on school supervision, confidentiality, and student rights, and that's presented by our school lawyer, Mary Rhodes, who came in and did that for our staff. So, it's been a busy month. Fall sports are wrapping up. We've got football going to Salem tomorrow night. Volleyball has a senior night tonight, which is why you couldn't find anywhere to park. And they'll open up with Waterloo on Tuesday for regionals at Columbia. Soccer closed out. Regional play on Saturday, they lost, but it was a, from what I understand, a really awesome and fantastic game against Jebo. They had lost, I think, nine to nothing earlier in the season, and then they lost two to one in the regional, but they said our kids just played phenomenal. Golf wrapped up, too, in their regional play, and cheerleading's finishing up, and then Cross Country is dominated the conference. I think our boys went one through seven, is that correct? Yeah. And then they are going to be heading to the regional, which is actually at Smithon this Saturday, and then working on their postseason. So, that's what we got.
What time does that start?
Ten.
Ten to eleven.
Thanks.
Okay, super finish port.
Okay, first thing I want to mention is the Freeburg Foundation is going to have their first-ever 5K Turkey Trot on Saturday, November nineteenth, and they're going to run kind of basically right around town. They're going to start and finish at the athletic field, and I know Mr. Madrell is on the foundation. If anybody's interested, he could probably give you more information, or take your check if you'd like to give him that.
Particularly, we'll take checks. Thanks, Brett.
You're welcome. Last week, I attended the Southwest Illinois Association of School Administrators Breakfast. At the breakfast, we had three state legislatures, Senator Luchfeld, Representatives Hoffman and Davidson Meyer, and walked out of there fairly depressed because the state of Illinois is not in great shape, and I did not get a lot of confidence from those three guys speaking that we're going to go in a positive direction anytime soon. A couple of things that are kind of hanging over the entire state. They're talking about a statewide tax cap. It was talked about last year. That's been brought up again. The pension reform, where they would shift the cost of pensions from the state to the district, and we're looking at an absolutely huge amount that would come to Freeburg. It would probably end up being around a million dollars additional per year that it would cost us for the pension. There also are two different committees at the state that are looking at new school funding models. The state, the committee that's being pushed by the governor is supposed to have a report sometime in either February or March, early spring, and the word that we're getting is that they're hoping that it's going to help schools downstate. They're trying to do what they call an evidence-based funding model. And so, we'll see how that goes, but it's a state, so I don't feel real confident in believing anything until I see it, so we'll see how that works out. Included in the packet was the preview of the Triple I Conference that Mr. Gouk and I are attending. I put it in there so that if any board member sees anything that maybe they're interested in, you know, if we're not sure during a specific session if we want to go to one thing or another, maybe they can help sway us. But it should be, again, another good convention. And then, lastly, Coach Law put on a surplus athletic uniform. I don't have the total, I think we were well over three thousand dollars that he made. He has several buckets or containers of uniforms left, and I think he's going to try to put another one on before Christmas. But it was pretty popular, especially for alumni who want to come back and get their uniform number. That's all I have here.
Thank you. A total business.
I just put the sidewalk project on here. I had spoken with a board member, and I just wanted to kind of let the other board members know that my plan is to look at this project again. This is the concrete project in front of the shops. The information we'd had previously is that it's probably going to be over the twenty-five-thousand-dollar threshold, so we'll have to go through a bid process. So, my thought is that we get back to that in the spring after the weather turned bad and then turned well. There was a meeting last night at Smithon. The Smithon Board from its community review group that they had were looking at reorganization, and so, three of us, Mr. Madrell, Mr. Haas, and myself, went to that meeting. There were representatives from all the other boards as well, and I have it on here in case either one of the board members want to talk a little bit. I did include a memo to you in your little folder, so if you want to take that out and kind of look at it while the other two guys are giving us any kind of update or impressions that they had about that meeting last night.
Go ahead, Mr. Gouk.
Basically, this is the second one of these meetings that I've attended about, I want to say around ten years ago. Sheila Simon went around the state and held forums, and there were probably around seven or eight, District Seventy-seven, Seventy administrators and faculty that went down to Johnny Logan, and there were probably about forty representatives, mostly from southern schools, high schools, community colleges, boards of education. And at that time, there was just, I don't know, one person spoke for it and thirty spoke against it, okay? You know, coming forward to today. Last night, a gentleman by the name of Dr. Osborne from Eastern Illinois University, who works with the state in terms of organizing school districts that are interested in talking about this, and without going into like a lot of detail, there's a very structured process that needs to occur, and a lot of fact-checking, a lot of getting people on board, a lot of processing. He said that overall, to facilitate one of these things is about four, five, maybe six months. And it was just an informational meeting about, here's all the steps that you need to take, and without going into those in great detail, and there's probably something like this available online, or, you know, we've got copies of some of the material that we picked up, and Greg has kind of outlined most of this in his memo for your information. But good discussion, good presentation by this gentleman. Basically, no decisions are made, you know, but Smithon Grade School, Freeburg Grade School, St. La Boree, and Freeburg High School represented, and I don't think anybody else represented.
That's it. That's all.
Perfect.
That's all.
Okay, that's my thought, yeah, that's my thought. About an hour, hour and a half meeting, roughly did this.
Yeah, I would agree.
The only things that I'll add on to Mr. Madrell's comments, it is a compressed time schedule, this being mid-October, and the requirements for such a feasibility study have to be completed by thirty June. And so, typically, as he mentioned, it takes four or five, even upwards of six months. And part of the deal is that normally, it's a school board that petitions the state, goes through the regional office of education, and then gets approved up at the state level to have a feasibility study. There is another method in which fifty members of the community in the school district can petition, or ten percent of your voters, if you happen to be from a small, but normally, it's a school board. Such studies, from time to time, receive grant money. Right now, the state of Illinois has grant money available to assist. Typically, these can run anywhere from five to eleven thousand dollars. I believe the grant money available from the state is about eight. A school can participate or not participate, and also, a school can, in the feasibility study, and also participate or not participate in the consolidation. So, none of our feeder schools would necessarily have to change if it would eventually come out as a consolidated school district. But the meeting last night, the feasibility study itself, its sole purpose is to decide whether or not a consolidated school district would be, would be, one, better for the students, two, maybe more efficient from a tax burden for the community. They look at everything. They look at ten different areas, from curriculum all the way down to what happens. Some of the other takeaways that I had, they're, in our particular case, there'd be no change of mascots. He mentioned that as a sticking point on a lot of, you get two high schools, for instance, that want to go together, which mascot are you going to take? That was his exact, and we don't have that condition. The other thing that he mentioned was that if a school district has a large amount of debt, it does not leave that existing school district's area. Those residents still are responsible for any debt that a school district brings into. But that is not the case on if there's a legal judgment or something that comes out of a lawsuit or something. Once a consolidated school district would come together, that would be spread out amongst the new, the new school district, and that might be applicable. That was one of the distractors. My takeaway on the session last night and moving forward was that we're on a compressed timeline, it's only informational, and we can't make an informed decision without the information in front of us. And so, I would, I would suggest, I don't know if something, you have this listed as an old business, but I don't know if it can be an action item or not, if it's listed where it is on the, on the agenda. In other words, if a motion can be made or not.
You can have a motion.
Okay, well, then, I would suggest that the money is available, we can only decide on our participation in a feasibility study. Our cost would be approximately, at most, if we paid for everything, that wouldn't be by a grant, it would be four thousand dollars. The other schools that choose to participate, and there's three others, could share the cost, the remaining four thousand dollars. That our cost might be a thousand dollars, would be the minimum, four thousand would be the max, to participate, hire an expert, and once and for all, I'll answer the question that a lot of our community members have on is there or isn't there benefits to it? But even last night, ultimately, it comes down to what's best for the kids. So, I would like to make a motion that we allow Mr. Fraking, in communication with Dr. Holmes, to represent us if it would come about that they want to move forward with applying or petitioning for a, for a school consolidation, feasibility study. And that would, my recommendation would be that, one, that we participate if they do have one, two, that we allow Mr. Fraking to make that, that call, or make the arrangements that we don't have to get back together for another meeting, just to, just to cross a t or dot in our.
I had a little bit different take on that. I know that Smithon Grade School called the meeting, and they had, I think, a board member or two that were interested in that. What I don't know, Dennis, is where is our grade school at, where St. La Boree is at, and where this board is at, you know, as far as, you know, charging ahead with that. I was thinking more along the lines of the superintendents getting together. I mean, I don't know, does this thing have legs? I don't know that it has legs other than this, than this meeting. And if it does, then to follow through with something like that. And that doesn't mean it can't happen. I don't know that it needs to happen, you know, like right away. Like, we, as a board, haven't talked about this yet, to my knowledge.
Well, this is the time and place. I mean, we can't meet, we can't meet another, another time in the location unless we waste another one and wait till the November to decide. We can't, it's not a, it's not a closed session topic that I would think, so if we're open for discussion now, if people, my only motivation was that if the other schools decide that they want to move forward, that we authorize Mr. Fraking to announce our participation in such a study if they want to move forward. We don't have to take it on our own. We could, but I was trying to prevent having to wait for a November meeting in order to make a decision for participation. In the study, this, again, it's only informational.
Well, I've got two pages of notes that are pretty comprehensive to share with the group. I don't know if, if Mr. Blomber would like to make his auto-report.
Greg's got something to say about this.
Well, I just wanted to, a couple of things. So, they call reorganization, there's two kind of avenues that would probably work in our situation. One, it would be a consolidation, where all the grade school districts would come with the high school, and it would be a unit district. There's also a situation where they can have thing called a partial elementary unit formation, and that's where, let's say, one of the grade school districts would not want to come in. And I won't pick a name, because someone will get out there and say that I don't think they should come in. So, let's say, grade school A doesn't want to come in, then the other grade schools and the high school can form a unit district, but that other district would still be served by the high school, but would not be part of the district. So, those were the two scenarios that I kind of took as a possibility for us. Once the petition is formed, this is after the study, but once petition's formed, there's what they call a committee of ten, and the committee of ten is put together with board members, community members, people associated with the school, whether it be administrators or employees, and those are, that group of ten go through and make some very important decisions about curriculum buildings. They do talk about the mascot, so more likely, you know, you're not going to have four mascots, you're going to pick one. So, that would be an issue, and the guy mentioned that this is something that's kind of joked about, that the hardest animal to kill is the school mascot. So, that is one of the things that have kind of shot down a lot of these things, is because people hold on to those, those kind of things. But that committee of ten also talks about tax rates. If, like Mr. Haas said, if there's any debt that a district brings in, that district and their residents, their taxpayers are still required to pay that through their taxes. There is some incentive from the state. The incentives are not what they used to be, but there are some incentives. Financially, the biggest issue is probably the difference between the salary schedules from the different districts, and I know in our case in particular, the high school's salary schedule is quite a bit higher than the other districts. I don't know a number, but that's going to be fairly substantial, and that's something that they would look at in the study. And once the study is finished, what they do is they make a recommendation. It's not a binding order from this person that does, it's just a recommendation, and it could be that they don't recommend consolidation, and it could be that they do recommend the consolidation. Once the recommendation is in, then the district- Once the recommendation is in, then the districts have to decide. They have to hold public meetings. There's a lot of involvement with the public. They have to go to the regional office, the regional office is the one that kinda coordinates a lot of this, and then it has to go to the state to get approval. Then it has to come back for, um, pass referendums in each of the districts. And if it doesn't pass in each of the districts, then the whole thing is shot down. So, um, to kinda go with Mr. Ha's talking about, um, so the, the study would start sometime in early spring and have to be finished by July, I'm sorry, by, well, first of July, June thirtieth. The thought is to try to get the grant, that we would be pushing it, uh, to try to apply for the grant and get the grant for this year. I have no idea what the other districts' thoughts are. My thought is that, uh, we go back and the superintendents talk and talk with their boards and say, you know, well, I think our feeling is that we may, some feelings may not be. And then I think, you know, this might be something that we look at, the feasibility study. And, and I honestly would be in favor of the study, but not till next year. And then we can kind of, uh, put this to bed completely, whether it is a good idea and everybody moves towards it, or it's, it's not a good idea for the, this particular community. I, I'm concerned we would be rushing it if we would try to get, uh, try to apply for the grant money. And financially, I don't, really would not be in favor of us spending the money ourselves to try to do the, the study ourselves. I guess there's always the risk that the grant money won't be there next year. But if we know that all the districts are in favor, uh, then we could probably budget for, um, splitting the cost of a feasibility study if there's not a grant, we could do that for next year. But, um, I think there's a lot to go into it, and I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen before there's movement, in my opinion, official movement by board.
I'd have to agree with Greg.
The, uh, the only comments that I made, my comment about the mascot was the fact that we do not have, two high schools, for instance, in the same community, a larger community being merged together, that they have to pick one mascot. Every, every school, Smith and, uh, has, has their own mascot and would be allowed to keep their mascots. They're not gonna become the mini midgets, the mini midgets too. They're gonna remain the Braves or, or the Hornets or whatever they are. And we're, uh, we would remain, uh, the midgets. The, uh, the argument against pushing forward with this, or at least the authorization, if, uh, if the other schools, uh, would decide to go through with it, would be that the grant money just became available. And it became available for this year's use. The studies typically start in January, and January is two months away. So certainly finding, uh, a qualified individual to do the feasibility study, there's plenty of time for that. My motion that's on the table, uh, it is only that we authorize Mr. Fraking to, to talk with Dr. Holmes and know our, our position as either, yes, we, uh, we would like to participate in a feasibility study if they decide to, to do one, or, uh, or not, and not have to wait another month to, to meet after maybe one of the feeder schools contacted, uh, Mr. Fraking. He said, well, we're, we're considering on participating, will you participate? I'm looking to authorize him, uh, to answer that question when he's asked. He doesn't have to spearhead the movement, uh, but at least, uh, tell them yes or no, uh, if, if asked.
Well, Dennis, if you, uh, I think we all feel that you wanna push forward with this. Do you wanna put this in the motion?
Well, I have a motion on the table. It hasn't received a second.
Well, we need a second, yeah, we're gonna move on. Anyone make, make a second? Okay, let's, let's proceed on, let, let this rest, you know, like, Mr. Fraking work on it and proceed forward or bring more information to the table.
Okay.
The last item, uh, that I have is, um, the one percent sales tax is not, um, gonna be on the November ballot. And so, uh, the push is from, uh, the county schools to have this put on the April ballot. And so, in order for that to happen, uh, they need, uh, a certain percentage of the schools to pass a resolution. And so I'm asking that the district, uh, pass a resolution saying that we would, uh, like to have this resolution put on the April ballot.
Do we have a motion for that?
Yes.
Do we have a motion out there?
I'm moving that we should put it, uh, make a motion to put it on the April ballot.
Motion made by Dennis, Mr. Toss?
Yes.
Second by Mr. McGraw. Okay, let's roll call that, will you start, Mr. McGraw?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You want a resolution? Wonderful.
Okay, number eleven, new business?
I met with, uh, Mike Heap, our transportation director this week, and, uh, sat down and talked about, um, our, uh, vehicles that we have. He has identified, uh, two vehicles that are in need of replacement in your packet. I put together a little bit of a memo on the two vehicles. Uh, we have a, uh, a small bus, uh, bus forty-two. About, uh, fourteen or close to fifteen years old, it's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. It's a twenty-one passenger bus. More importantly, it has a wheelchair lift. It's our only small bus with the wheelchair lift. It is used mainly for our life skills and transition to transport those students back and forth to school and throughout the day. It's had quite a few repairs, he feels like it is in need of replacing. A new bus would be, uh, probably close to ninety thousand dollars. Mr. Heap has worked with other districts and they've bought, have purchased used buses that are a couple of years old. They're in very good shape, uh, have lots of life left in them, out in them, and can usually pick those up from somewhere between fifty or sixty thousand dollars. The other vehicle is van four, uh, it is a small Astro van. It is, uh, it's got about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand miles on it. It's much smaller than the bigger vans that we use. It is, it is very much needed, um, replacement. I know I drove the golf team a couple of times and the big door slid open as I was driving. So that made for an exciting ride. That's been fixed, by the way. But, um, uh, what he would look at is probably replace it with a similar eight-passenger van to what we have now. Uh, that is used, um, for different activities, both during the day and after school. He's thinking that, that a van is probably gonna be somewhere in the range of about between thirty and forty thousand dollars. We do have, uh, a line item for, uh, vehicles in the budget for a hundred and twenty thousand. These would easily come under that. All I'm asking for is that the board, um, approve me to go and, uh, come up with bids. Or, I'm sorry, come up with specifications. So, you know, once the specifications are put in front of you, you have the choice then to move forward. But this way, we can kinda put specifications together, come up with a lot, uh, better idea of what we're looking at.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Towers, second by Mr. Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proceed forward.
Okay, uh, the last, uh, Mr. Ballmer of Moore, Renner, and, uh, Seminole, P.C. is here to talk about our fiscal year sixteen audit. Uh, this is annual business, and so he is, uh, gonna grace us with his presentation. And he told me forty-five, fifty minutes would be about all that he's gonna have. And you, you have a copy of the budget in, uh, that binder.
Good evening. Where we usually start with the district and, in our report is, uh, with your financial profile. That's usually one of the most important areas that all districts are concerned with. This year, um, the district had a little bit of an issue, um, as we've been having more expenditures over the past couple of years and using our funds. We have, uh, slid down into a score of a two-point-three-zero, which, uh, puts you on the financial watch list. The, um, warning starts at our, the low end of the warning is a two-point-six-two. So you guys went from a, a review last year, which was a three-point-one score, down to a two-point-three score. The watch range is from one to two-point-six-one. So here, um, at the upper end of that, uh, part of what transpired, as I said, days of cash was one of the big items that moved from a hundred and nineteen days to sixty-one days. And the expenditures, um, to revenue has also dropped. What does it mean to be on the watch list? With the watch list, same as if you would've gone into the financial warning, the state will monitor the district. They'll look at, at your records, look at what is presented, what we send them in the, in the state report. They offer technical assistance, such as financial projections, cash flow analysis, budgeting, personnel inventories, and enrollment projections, which is things that you're doing anyway. One of the items that they can, they will also do is review what's submitted, review the documentation if they ask you for anything, to determine if you, uh, fit into Article one-eight-eight of the school code, one-eight-eight. If you would fit into that category, which you're more likely than not, not going to, because that's for districts that really are having serious issues. They've had to, uh, do teachers' orders or tax anticipation warrants. They've had two consecutive years of the ed fund, the O and M fund, transportation and working cash exceeding fund balance. So basically, what if you started the year with a negative fund balance and you went more negative for two years in a row with those four funds, then they would be much more concerned about the district, and probably be in to look a, a lot quicker than what they will probably be doing here. Are those districts don't work with the state, they don't provide them any information, fail to be able to pay payroll or pay their debt service. Those would be the only reasons that they would really come in under, under school code one-eight-eight. This being the first year, uh, being on the watch list, I took a look at sort of St. Clair County to kinda give you guys an idea of what's going on around you. There's twenty-seven other districts in St. Clair County. In twenty-fifteen, there were three other districts on the watch list. In twenty-fourteen, there were four other districts. Statewide, how, how do we trend on that? If we go back to two thousand and four, there were a hundred and fifty-two districts out of eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven that were on the watch list. From two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve, it got down to seventeen. From that year going forward, it's been building up again. And if you look at how states funded the districts, what they've done, when they've changed the foundation levels, when they've worked with the numbers as to how much money, how many grants, anything like that, you can probably follow that trend of the number of districts that are going on, on the watch list. For last year, there were thirty-two districts out of eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven that were on the watch list. That does not include the ones that have been taken over in the past, um, for, uh, years and years. There were usually about two districts in the state, three, uh, Cairo, Illinois, East St. Louis, and Chicago District that were under a financial authority. Now, there's about seven that are under financial authority, where the state actually put somebody in charge of the finances for the district. So what does that mean for the district? That means we need to really be careful going forward, watch how we're spending money, do everything we can to get back into a positive cycle. One of the causes of some of the negative this year is the way that the real estate taxes were sent out from the county. In previous years, we've been getting several distributions of real estate taxes prior to June third. So that figures into the bottom line. That cash is usually held over from year, from one year to the next, because it's actually for the next year. So when we look at the twenty-fifteen year, we got six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand of revenue for the twenty-sixteen year. In twenty-sixteen, we got ninety-three thousand for the twenty-seventeen year. So when you take into consideration that you didn't receive five-hundred-and-sixty thousand and we're just barely on into the watch list category, we might have been hanging on in the financial warning area and not have hit the, the watch list with additional revenues. But we can't, uh, say for sure that that would've been the only factor that, that kept us out, because there were changes in the other, other four factors that are contributing to the score. When we look at what's happened, if we look at edu, just, uh, the educational fund, which is the main culprit in most instances, we received four-point-two million in revenue this year versus four-point-three last year versus four-point-six the year before. So there's a downward trend of, of revenue that's coming in each year to the district. Now, as I said, there were real estate taxes that are part of that, uh, between this current fiscal year and last fiscal year, but the five-hundred-and-sixty-one is an all part of the ed fund that's spread out between all the, all of the funds. If we look at expenditures, we had five-point-one this year, five-point-five last year, and five-point-three the year before. So we did have a spike in the previous fiscal year, which we did bring down in the current fiscal year. So that is a good trend. How does this affect you overall? Your ADA this year went up considerably, and with the reduction of expenditures, we were able to drop the operating expense per people to eleven thousand three fifty-four from twelve thousand and twenty-three. The per capita tuition cost, uh, went down to ten thousand seven sixty-seven from eleven-five the year before. So those numbers are trending well. In looking back, those are lower than numbers we had in twenty, I didn't have something to look at before twenty thirteen, but the, the two costs we have this year are less than what was in twenty thirteen. As Mr. Fraking, uh, alluded to, one of the issues going forward for all districts is what's gonna happen with the state pensions. This year, the on-behalf contribution that the state would have made for the district was one-point-two million. TRS has two levels in TRS, tier one and tier two. Tier one, uh, anybody employed before a certain date belongs to that. Everybody employed after that is a tier two. The tier-two employees, you guys actually pay more every year into that tier per, um, employee than is needed for the cost to, uh, cover what their retirement's going to be. The reason the state did that is they use that subsidy to help pay for future benefits that are, are going forward for all your active, your retirees, current pensions being paid out. Last year, that was enough actuarially to cover what was going on going forward. This year, based on the studies, it's not enough now to cover going forward for those groups. So what that ends up doing is it hurts the fund when it looks at how much it needs to, uh, get in each year to fund it. They have to lower the rate of return because they don't have enough money coming in to fund out, uh, everything they're doing. So how'd that affect, how's that affect the district's numbers? We look at the on, um, your proportionate share of the sixty-some billion dollars that the state owes to TRS in the current, we're always a year behind. They don't have the current numbers until the following year. So this is basically for fiscal year fifteen and fourteen. The district's share is six-hundred-and-forty-two thousand for fifteen, seven-hundred-and-forty-six for fourteen. So it actually improved. You have less proportionate, uh, based on what your contributions were and how the formula was figured. But now, the, now's the number that we don't know what the state's going to do with. And that's the state's proportionate share of the district's cost. For year fifteen, that's twenty-three million dollars. For year fourteen, it was twenty million. So the lack of that subsidy is affecting the state's proportionate share because they have the lion's share of what goes into, are supposed to be going into TRS. So when you are planning to go forward, as alluded to, if you have to fund those and come up with twenty, an extra twenty-four million dollars going forward with a proportionate share each year, um, you- share each year, you know, is that a million dollars, is it a million five, is it two million? We don't know. And, and that's the, the big wild card right now. Will they pass something before the election? Will they wait till right after the election, lame duck sessions? We don't know what they're doing with that. And then the downside is if they put the property tax cap on, right now pensions, you're allowed to tax based on your need. If they would cap all of those and not allow the pensions to, to be taxed, or you to acquire real estate tax to fund that pension, then we have to figure out how the districts are going to pay for that. It's not only your problem, it's all the districts in the state that are, are facing this issue. IMRF, on the other hand, when you look at a, a system that's been well-run, well-managed, they get contributions from the members, they get contributions from the district. Your share there was three hundred and forty-three thousand for year fifteen, two hundred thousand for year fourteen. And that's funded over a decreasing annual year. Right now, it's on year twenty-eight. So basically, over a twenty-eight-year period, you're going to have to fund that. So that's not much additional cost to the district every year. We don't know for sure where that's going to head. We do know that right now, with the direction your educational fund is in, that we do need to try to make as many adjustments as we can there. We know the majority of the costs in the ed fund relate to salaries and benefits. That is about eighty-four percent of the expenditures out of the ed fund. So with the other fifteen to sixteen percent, we've got to try to cut some costs and look into ways to manage the, the large burden that we have in, in the first category. Outside of that, the district, the other funds were operating fairly well. The expenditures that came out were based on what you had planned to expend, be it fire prevention and safety or transportation. So outside of that, the district was running pretty well during the year, and it's just a matter of trying to improve our score so we're not staying on the watch list. Any questions? I'd like to thank Mr. Fraking and his staff for their assistance while we're out here performing our work and all the help they give us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Anybody have any actual questions for Mr. Fraking or Mr. Ballmer? Need a motion to accept? Annual budget FY 2016. Listen by Mr. Parrish. Second by Ms. Towers. Rule call that. Do you, Dennis?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Any board correspondents?
No.
Ten items. Please go into closed session.
Yes. For litigation and, and employee benefits and.
The appointment of employee conversation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony, complaint, live against the employee, and legal counsel of the district to determine if, is the lit, ILCS 120 slash two, see. Litigation, this is litigation where the action against effective power on behalf of a particular district has been filed in his pending before the court or commensurate tribunal par, when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case based on our findings, so will be recorded, entered into closed session and. That's all we need? Got a motion, go into closed session. We rule call that. Coming with Ken.
Aye.
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 Now in closed session.